Welcome to the City Council Special Meeting of February 18th, 2021. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, City Manager, this is where you take over.
Sir, do you want the clerk to-
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Clerk, will you read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Comments made under "public comment" must relate directly to the agenda items. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items.
Thank you very much. Now, City Manager.
Annually, the Neighborhood Services Department is tasked with developing an action plan to administer the city's federal community development block grant, CDBG program. As part of this process, the department seeks to allocate funds to eligible nonprofit agencies or organizations providing public services in the community to assist the department in the administration and expenditure of program funds. Additionally, during the annual action plan process, the department provides an opportunity for the public to comment on the previous year's grant performance. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct a public hearing on the performance of the city's FY '20 CDBG grant program and to provide an opportunity for agencies and organizations seeking funding through the Request for Proposal processes to provide a brief presentation on their request. Although the presentations are not mandatory to receive funding, staff has encouraged each of the agencies applying for funding to attend this meeting. And with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Terry, and off we go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello, Ms. Terry.
We're here for our typical annual process to start our grant program for next fiscal year, '21-'22. And we'll start off with a presentation, if I can figure out how to turn it on. There we go. Just to give a little update for those that may be present in the audience are watching from home. This gives an outline of the purpose of this meeting. Again, it's to give a report on our last performance for 1920, to review the strategies and identify what programs can be funded for next year and to hear requests from those agencies that have asked for funding. So just to give you a little bit of background on who the Neighborhood Services Department is, we manage and oversee the city's federal and state grant programs for the city. These are federal and state grants that provide funding for our public services, our housing programs, emergency assistance-type programs, and infrastructure improvements throughout the city. The mission for the Community Development Program, it's not so much about fixing houses, which a lot we hear about, but it's also to provide supportive services throughout the community and to strive to maintain economic stability. We set goals and objectives. We want to ensure that the programs are appropriate to the community's needs. We want to consider the history, needs, and demographics and economics, as well as the housing stock. We want to design programs that address needs related to neighborhood revitalization. We want to focus our resources so that we have visible results. And we want to address needs in neighborhoods such as our rehab program, redevelopment programs, and economic development programs. Our objectives, we want to focus on preserving and retaining existing housing stock, which provides sustainability to improve property values. We do that through our Housing Rehabilitation Program and Historic Preservation. Focusing on serving the needs of our citizens, we want to focus on a diverse range of programs that will target specific needs. And you'll see a list there of goals for that. Our housing objectives is focused on preventing further deterioration by providing rehabilitation, funding, and technical assistance to homeowners. We want to provide a safe and efficient housing within our financial reach of our residents. We want to stimulate interest in neighborhood preservation. We want to prevent homelessness. And we want to partner with other programs for maximum impact. To get to where we need to go, we want to understand the community's needs. We have several needs that we consider when we're developing the plan. We also put goals and objectives in writing. We review those goals and objectives periodically. And we undertake initiatives that are compatible with the mission. We also want to plan for change. As we know, right now, we have a lot of change going on that drives what the needs are. So we always are monitoring both met and unmet needs. We want to secure support from the community and those that we serve. We want to also target programs to the right market and right properties so that we understand the needs. We also have to analyze our resources and also consider our constraints. For the CDBG program, to give a rundown on how those funds are acquired, they are federal funds that are given directly to the city of Titusville. We are considered an entitlement government. We don't have to apply for the funds. We just have to show how we're going to use the funds, and those meet conditions of HUD. So of the funds that we get, we have, can use up to 15% for public services to fund those programs, like you'll hear from tonight. We can use up to 20% for administrative functions. And the remainder of the funds can go towards programs and activities as long as they serve low-to-moderate income households. You'll also, we also will talk about the Home Grant Program a little bit. We get funds through Brevard County as a consortium. As a standalone, the city does not have the population to get those funds, but through an agreement, Brevard County shares those funds with Titusville, Cocoa, Palm Bay, and Melbourne. So those funds are also federal funds. 15% of the funds must be set aside to give to community housing organizations. Those are developers that provide affordable housing. And then 10% for administration, that's the maximum. We usually get around 7.5%, 8% from the county. And all of these funds must go to housing. They cannot be used for public services or infrastructure, any of those other things that we normally do CDBG with. We also have to have a match from a non-federal program to get those funds. And we use our SHIP program for that. So during 1920, here you will see the amount of available funds the city received between CDBG and Home. We also carried over funds from 1819, as you see broken down there. And those were funds that were allocated to programs or activities that were still ongoing during that year and may not have closed out by September 30th. So the funds we expended, you'll see how that's broken down in our balance of funds there between CDBG and Home. The Home balance is a little higher than we'd like to see, but that is because the city received some repayments on some loans, on some projects that fell through, or on properties that were sold. We have a trend right now where people are selling their homes instead of sticking it out through the affordability period of their assistance. 305,000 of that large balance you see for Home has been allocated to a new affordable housing project that you'll see next year. During 1920, we assisted three nonprofit agencies, you see there, through CDBG. We also used funds last year to do street improvements. We paved, I believe it was, 10 streets with that fund. We also used an additional, a little over 61,000, for administration. So here's your ongoing projects from last year. Our Neighborhood Revitalization Program, we have a fund balance in that. And that is for activities that revitalize the target area. There's your large affordable housing project for next year. And then our Housing Rehab and Home Buyer Programs, those funds are allocated to ongoing that program. And this further kind of breaks down our accomplishments for last year in our Housing Rehab Program. It shows you how many homes were assisted and the total expended for that, as well as our First-Time Home Buyer Program and our Public Services and our Streets. Yeah, there was 10 roads, 1.4 miles last year. That is basically the end of our performance report before we get into, going into this year for next year. Are there any questions right now before we-
Council questions? Then I have one. Slide 10.
Slide 10.
Okay, here we go. Slide 10, Bullet 4, Prevent Homelessness by Partnering with Housing Developers and Partners in Providing Support Services.
The slides aren't numbered.
Homelessness seems to be one of the things that I get to talk about a lot. And I don't know that I understand it enough to talk about it a lot. But I have been to several homeless meetings and some ceremonies even. But that being said, I read that in "prevent homelessness", and that seems like that's where we're at with every meeting I'm at. Do we kind of have a plan that we could lay out? Or if I was to go to, when I go to the next meeting, I brought you with me and you could present, what would it be that we're presenting? What is it that we do to try to prevent homelessness?
What we have done and found works for us because the city usually isn't at the ground level of dealing with homelessness because a lot of the nonprofits get those specialized funding for those programs. So what we've done is we've developed a partnership with the Housing Coalition. They're our lead entity, and they know how to do things better than we do when it comes to that topic. So we've developed a plan with them, in conjunction with them, that works countywide, but is also tailored to the city's needs as they come up. We have a process that they follow. It starts with an individual calling the city, and we refer them to an agency that has the full supportive process. Tonight, I think you'll be happy to hear, we have an agency that has applied for funding that is doing just that for us. And it will get more funds locally and expand the opportunities for the homeless population.
And funding-wise, our funding for the homeless comes from either the federal or state dollars?
It can come from both. But the city doesn't get the homeless dollars directly from HUD. They go to the, I always know them as COC, and I forget what that stands for. Continuum. Continuum of Care. They get the homeless funds. So that's why we try to partner with them to get those funds, not just county-wise, but also get some allocated locally, depending on what each city's need is. So that's why we kind of have that plan with them because they're the funnel of where the funds go.
Okay, well, thank you. And since we meet in your building anyway, when we meet next time, I'm going to ask you to come on in with me. All right, I appreciate it. Any questions, anything else right now? All right, we move forward.
Sorry. Can we go back to the previous presentation, please?
They got mirrors back there. I can't even tell if they're there.
Okay, there we go. So normally, every five years, we develop a consolidated plan, which drives each annually, each year, what we're going to do with the funds. So there's like a big picture with the five-year plan. And then we have each year an annual plan that is driven off of that five-year plan. Normally, this time, this is our fifth and final year, this fiscal year, we would be sitting here talking about what our new five-year consolidated plan is for the next five years. Because of the COVID-19 impacts that's had on our grant programs, HUD has extended that process a year, which will give us time to focus on if there's going to be any further impacts from COVID so that we have the right programs. Make sure that we analyze what the need's going to be for the next five years. Hopefully, we're not sitting here five years from now talking about COVID. But I'm sure we will be for the next couple of years. So we're continuing on with our current consolidated plan strategies with an extension from HUD. So these strategies that you see were developed five years ago, but we will continue to follow these until we have a new plan, five-year plan with HUD. So here's our strategies about affordable housing, public services, and infrastructure and neighborhood improvements. And also to enhance the safety and sustainability and support for our neighborhood-based organizations and group to create community unity. This gives you a snapshot of the last 10 years of our CDBG and Home revenues. You can see back in 1011, we had a lot of revenue coming in from CDBG, and it slowly tapered down. And I think we're seeing the trend where it's starting to go back up. So this year, we'll be able to kind of recoup some of the programs and activities that's kind of been delayed over the last year or two. So for next year, for 2021, 21-22, sorry, we're going to use this year, 2021's grant, as a basis to develop this action plan. We have been told by HUD that February 25th, we should have the actual numbers of our grant. So by the time we come back to you in March, we'll have actual numbers, and you can see how things may have shifted at that time. So if we use this year's grant, you'll see what we could allocate for administration, public services, and remainder for projects. This year, if you recall, a few months back, council approved the acceptance of the CARES Act grant. We have two phases of that grant, which is going to bring a little over 440,000 into our community to provide COVID-19 emergency assistance. What that does is it pays for arrearsage on rent, mortgages, utilities, and current and future rent and utilities and mortgages over a six-year span. The maximum is six months that we can help someone with those money. So under the Home program for next year, again, we'll use this year's allocation as a basis to start. There's your breakdown on where the funds would be allocated. There's really no change there because that's mandatory for the CHODO, which leaves the balance for the housing programs. Let's see, we already, oh, what happened? How did we get there? Went to a small screen. Did I hit something? It was the end. Okay. Thank you. I still have paper in front of me. It can't be the end. Let's see, yeah, let's see what the next one is. Maybe it has these in it. You'll have in your council packet, there was attachments to the report that gave you the breakdown again on those funds. And then we also had Attachment 5, which was page 37 of your report, listed the applications we received this year for next year's grant. We received three eligible applications for a total of $53,300 in request, which, if we use this year's allocation, it exceeds that a little bit. But if the trend keeps going up, we might have enough to fully fund those. And then the remainder there, although it says "street improvement program", that's sidewalk improvement program. We're so used to Public Works doing streets this year. They are putting a request in to do sidewalk improvements in the target area. And the rest is administration. Okay, let's see. So this is for next year, the target area map. I know it's a little hard to see up there. But there's no change from last year, or this current year to next year. This gives you a breakdown on the Public Works proposal for sidewalk improvements. They are seeking a hundred, a little over 199,000 to fund sidewalk improvements. There are the locations that are proposed. The letters in parentheses represent which side of the street. So that would be the north side of Tropic, the west side of First, and so on. This gives you a visual of the Tropic Street improvements. This is the First Avenue and Gilbert, so there's a long stretch there. Gilbert is on both sides of the street. And then for the Neighborhood Services Department, we will continue the CARES Act with the additional funds that we received. It was supplemental funds, the 443,000. It would be broken down here, direct payments to residents for rent, mortgages, or utilities, and then the remaining balance for administrative costs. So that concludes our presentation. After this, we will have each agency come up and give a presentation on their RFP requests. If you have any questions before that.
Vice Mayor.
I have one question, Terry. I must be reading it more carefully these days. When I looked at the Consolidated Plan Strategy, it indicated that the money could also be used to support job training?
Yes, that is correct.
Have we ever done that?
I'm sorry?
Have we ever done that? Have we ever provided job training?
We have, the city not directly. We do that through our subrecipients, those that ask for funding. We have funded agencies in the past for job training, both adults and those that are going into the working field. But yes, we have funded those type of programs.
What kind of training programs have been provided?
It's been a while since we've had an application for job training. I could probably get you that information and let you know what we've had in the past.
I was just curious.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Member Robinson.
Yes, Terry, I see we're getting a lot of sidewalks put in. What else do we have on the calendar to get, to use those dollars for, with the exception, except sidewalk?
This year, we have, I think it's like 200 or maybe... For this year, Streets is on the schedule for this year.
Okay.
I know we're doing DeLeon and some other side streets. We, actually, the bid package went out this month. So we should start seeing this year's Streets being done and completed before June. For next year, outside of that request, that's the only thing I have on the agenda, is the sidewalk repairs, except for the projects we are working with the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Group. They are still working and coming up with some ideas on what they would like to do with the funds that council has set aside for that.
So DeLeon is coming up?
Yes.
It's on this program year?
Actually, I've been told that DeLeon is being done with general funds.
Okay.
It takes a lot more to do that street because it's so long.
Correct.
Good? Okay. I see no other, no, Vice Mayor Nelson's back.
I'm sorry, Terry, I'm back. We had talked about parks, and I think that neighborhood group had talked about parks also. Is that something that we might- Is that something that we might want to look at as part of this?
We can. I have reached out to Jeff Davis with Brevard Parks and Rec. They can submit some middles to have improvements done to parks. With HUD, though, it's a little kind of a border gray area because you can't use it for maintenance, but you can use it for improvements. So, we've had that discussion with Mr. Davis. I didn't see any requests this year, so I'm not sure where their budget was this year on improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I see no others, but I'm gonna add just one comment. And I want to make sure I get it in here because there's, we got this presentation of what has been done, what's going to be done. And we got maybe, and these people who are going to give presentations of what they can do and what they need. But outside of that, we don't have a whole lot of people here that are hearing this. I find it an issue that too many of the people who have the need don't know about what's offered. And I know that Vice Mayor mentioned job training, and I know I've had some people in the community stand in front of us and talk about job training and workforce, or whatever they call that. I'd like to see us get more hands-on, involved with those sort of things. But more than anything else, somehow, and that's not to say you're not doing your best to do that. I was with Brevard Public Schools a long time, and I thought I advertised everything really well, and people were like, "Well, I didn't hear that." So, I get it. But we gotta do our very best to get the people who have the need to know how to get their needs met. Because this is all looks good, and it looks like, you know, and I'm very pleased with the DeLeon and the sidewalks and all those things. And even though that's not a need they need to come and seek, it would be nice if the community and the city in general knew that we are doing this. Because I'll bet you 90% of the people you ask have no idea. So, just communication, and I know you're doing your best with that, but I wanted to get that said.
Thank you for that.
Okay, with that, we will move forward.
Yes, sir. So, we have three presentations tonight. Our first request is from Aging Matters in Brevard.
Do I need to turn this on? Nope, looks like it's on. Okay, good. Yeah, all right. I'm Paula Schroeder, and my business address or my personal? I work with Aging Matters in Brevard. That's in, located in the city of Cocoa, our administrative offices, but we serve the entire county. We're the Meals on Wheels people. And we are seeking $10,000 for, to support Meals on Wheels for next year. And we are currently funded by, through the CDBG as well in the city of Titusville. And in January, I just checked, we serve 69 people. We serve 1,235 meals. And our contract is to serve 20 people for three, just a little over 30, 300 meals for the year. But it's to supplement the other funding that we receive through the Older Americans Act in the federal government and some money from the county as well. But I wanted to mention as well, most of the, all of the funding that we are receiving through the city of Titusville is used to support the Meals on Wheels. But we also have our Seniors at Lunch program, which is a congregate dining program. And in the city of Titusville, it meets at the St. James AME Church on DeLeon. We had to close that in March. This has been one heck of a year. Just incredible. We had 12 facilities across the county. We had to close them all. That's about 500 people that were coming to lunch every day, social activities. You know, it's really where they got to meet and greet their friends. We couldn't do much about the space because it's not a, it's a closed environment. So, we can't have elderly people coming together. But we are able to contract with a vendor. We're providing them with frozen meals. So, at least they get food. Every two weeks, they pick up a case of frozen meals. But the Meals on Wheels program is continuing to run as it always has. We have not missed one single day.
Wow.
I'm so proud to say that. Our volunteers have been absolutely outstanding. We have a new volunteer coordinator here in Titusville, and you have got a gem. Lisa Sign is her name. And she has done so much to encourage people to volunteer. All of our volunteers get masks and gloves. We have protocols. You know, we can't go into the homes at all. The clients are asked to have tables set out in front of their front door, but they still can talk to each other. And for a lot of our clients, that is really one of the most important things about Meals on Wheels. Thinking of one lady who moved here a couple of years ago from New York with her husband. They wanted to retire to Florida. They weren't here a year before he passed away. She has no family, no friends. She doesn't really, she doesn't drive. You can't drive to be on Meals on Wheels. And she said that volunteer that comes to her house to deliver that meal every day at least gives her some social connection. We also deliver pet food through our Pets on Wheels program to her once a month.
Wow.
So, excuse me. It gets, even after all this time I've been doing this, it gets a little emotional because these are folks who are truly on their own. But I think that the meals that we provide, the nutrition that we provide on a daily basis is very important. Everybody got a Christmas gift this year. And it's all through community donations. So, it's really a wonderful program. Terry and Tracy keep us straight. We make sure that we document everything that we do. And so, that's a way we would be spending the money.
First of all, my hat's off to you that you didn't miss a beat during this virus.
I know, it's incredible.
That's absolutely incredible. And then, you add to that, everybody gets a Christmas gift. And that means, that means a lot to me. My mom, before she passed away, was on Meals on Wheels until she couldn't stay home on her own anymore. And I cannot tell you how important it was just to have a friendly face come to the door. I'm sure it's different now. You may be talking through windows, but it's an amazing service. It's not just the meal, although that's terribly important. It's so much about looking out the window, waiting on that person to come see them.
Yep, we've got, thank you for that. In fact, that's a Meals on Wheels America slogan, "More than a meal." And we do have people that say that, you know, they do. They sit and they wait. I'll tell you, we get phone calls in our office. If that volunteer isn't there, they're normally there at 11:45. If they're not there by noon, we get calls. Where's my meal? Am I going to be getting a meal today? Oh, my goodness. We've got one woman who's, you know, clearly got dementia. She is just the sweetest thing. She calls every day to ask if she got her meal because she can't remember.
That's so cute. I mean, that's sad, but it's so cute that it means so much to her.
Yeah, and she's got that, you know, she's got the connection, not just with the volunteers that come to her home, but then, the people at her office too, that, you know, pick up the phone and talk to her too. So, yeah, we've got, you know, so many different circumstances of people. And it's, it really is, it's so rewarding for our volunteers. And I think that's one reason that they keep doing it. They have the same people, they deliver to the same route. You know, like if I'm the Tuesday driver, I'm gonna see the same people every Tuesday. So, they do build a relationship that way.
Absolutely.
And it means as much to the drivers as it does to the clients.
Well, for me, it's just a personal thing for me because I saw what it did for my mom, and she too was in dementia. And there were, you know, obviously, she couldn't be by herself very long. But while she was, you guys were huge to her. Member Robinson?
Yes, I am. I'm somewhat familiar with Aging Matters. And yes, it's hard-wrenching to be able to see what you see, but you're able to help. And I see that you guys are still out there doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, you know what? It's, in a way, the whole COVID thing brought attention to our, because we do serve elderly people who are homebound, living alone. And of course, they're the most vulnerable to the virus. And so, nationally, the donations were really, you know, really increased. We had some NFL players that started campaigns. So, we were able to, using grant money through the national organization, buy some equipment for the kitchen.
Yep.
That it's just, you know, it's getting beaten every single day. And, you know, increase our freezer space so that we could have those frozen meals to deliver.
Well, in a very special way, talk about frontline essential workers, frontline essential volunteers, but it's a terribly important thing you do. I see no other lights, so thank you so very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Our next agency is South Brevard Women's Center.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
It's good to see you on the other side of the podium.
It is. I know all of these folks.
I know. Coming home here.
Just your name and who you represent.
My name's Becky Lemstrom. I'm with the Women's Center. It's good to see you all.
Very good.
And thanks for having us here. Thanks to you guys. I know you guys have been very busy this year with all your extra programs. I want to let you know with your support from last year, we've been funded several years. We were able to provide over 5,700 services to over 1,200 residents in 1920 fiscal year. All these residents were victims of violence. Examples of the services that were provided were shelter in our safe house, crisis counseling, personal advocacy, assistance with injunctions for protection, and helping with victim compensation claims. I know you all know us, but we'll be celebrating our 46-year in Brevard. And we believe that no victim of violence, regardless of their socioeconomic status, should be without care and support they need to heal and live in a safe environment. We've been in Titusville since 2010. We have an office over on Julius Street. We've got strong partnerships with you guys, of course, the Police Department, Parish Medical, and a lot of citizens in the city who were extremely grateful for the need to assist victims has been demonstrated through the FDLE Uniform Crime Report for 2019, which is the most recent data that's out that showed that Titusville had 507 domestic violence offenses throughout 2019, including one murder. And our safe house is a much-needed facility for women and their kids who are escaping these situations and need safety and then, time to figure out what their next steps are going to be. And 2020, as we know, is an exceptional year. And, you know, the same thing followed through with our services, and our advocates saw increased need and increased severity and intensity of the cases that they were seeing throughout the pandemic. At first, it was, everything was kind of quiet. And then, as it went on, things really ramped up, unfortunately. So, our mission is to empower these families by providing counseling, education, and support so that they can move on with their lives. And we do that through our Victim Services Program. We have a counseling program that is for trauma resolution, as well as we have a generalized counseling practice. We have the Housing Program, the Emergency Safe House. And then, in Melbourne and Palm Bay, we have Transitional Safe Housing. Then, we have a Summer Day Camp for girls. But our ask here is for the safe house. And, you know, like I said, it provides a home for people when they are in immediate need. You know, sometimes our drivers will go out and pick them up from wherever they may be, and sometimes the hospital, someplace, or someplace safe. And while they're in the safe house, they rest. And then, they work with our advocates and our counselors to figure out what to do next. I just looked at the past two years' data, and the average length of stay is four weeks. Some people just stay a day, you know, they get out of danger, and then, they're connect with family or friends and figure out where they can go. Some people don't have those connections. And so, the longest I saw was about three months if someone was staying. But it sounds like a long time, but if you're coming in with absolutely nothing, you don't work.
Right.
You don't have a bank account, you don't have a car. It takes some time to stabilize and figure out what to do. After they leave our safe house, they're still welcome to come back for counseling and case management. They don't, you know, just because they're out of the safe house doesn't mean, you know, they're gone from us. And then, we follow up with them at three, six, and 12-month intervals after they're gone. And the latest stat of checking in with someone after 12 months is 84% of those clients hadn't returned to their abuser and reported living a violence-free life. And that's pretty high, you know?
It is high.
I was pleasantly surprised about that. So, anyway, we're asking for money for really running the safe house, operational expenses, electricity, maintenance items that come up, food, personal items that the clients all get when they come in, and small repairs, security system, and that type of, that type of thing.
Well, you two are to be commended for continuing, moving forward during this crazy year. And as you said, I don't think I'd be surprised, it got very busy with the domestic issues. I would also say that it would be a wonderful day if you came in here and said, "You know what? We don't need anything anymore. We're good, there's nobody to be here."
Yeah.
But that's not the case. And so, we need you, our city needs you, and certainly, the people who you serve need you. So, you know, I'm just glad you're there for those people.
Yeah, yeah, I was really proud of our staff. You know, when COVID came, I happened to have, need to go out to the safe house, which I don't normally do, but we had an audit coming in, a financial audit, and they needed to look at the program areas as well. And it was right when everything was ramping up. I'm like, "Are you sure you want to go?" She's like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I need to go." But it was great. So, our place is a home that was converted into three individual apartments so that people, it's not a communal living, it's all in one house. But everybody has their own bedroom and bathroom, so a family can stay together. And so, that was good to see, and everybody was doing well. As it got a little more intense, sometimes we would put people in hotels just to try to keep, you know, exposure, exposure down. And it was great to see how we were able to morph, and then, we were able to start using technology. We had thought about starting using telehealth for our counseling program, and so, we kind of fast-tracked that and began doing that for our counseling. And then, if people would call in and couldn't meet with someone, we got an app set up for people's phones or computers, you know, just to have a face-to-face meeting. So, that was, you know, an innovative necessity.
Well, again, I look at you as a frontline essential worker and volunteer, but I think an awful lot of people look at you guys as angels. I mean, seriously, a tough spot, and it's tough for you guys.
It is, it is. I, you know, I don't work with any of the clients, and I, you know, my heart goes out to our advocates who do because it's, it's rough. Like, you know, I asked them, I said, "What do you, you know, what do you mean when you've seen it's gotten a little more intense?" And she was like, "Do you really want to know?" And I was like, "Well, I do, in case someone asks." And it's incredible, the things that people, that you don't think of happening, happens.
Well, and when you guys care as much as you do, it hurts.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate you. Anything from the council?
You have any questions about the proposal?
Say again, I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, I see no questions right now. We have the proposals in our packet.
Okay.
And with that, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, our last agency this evening is Family Promise of Brevard.
Name, and we know your family promise.
Hi there. Yeah. My name is Tara Pagliarini. I'm the Executive Director of Family Promise of Brevard. Our mission is to prevent and end family homelessness in Brevard County. And it's all through community collaborations that help provide families the support and resources that they need to put themselves on that path towards long-term self-sufficiency and independence. We can't do it alone. There's not one agency that can prevent and end family homelessness. So, our ask tonight is to fund case management services in our three programs. The reason this is our first time here tonight is no stranger to you. As the pandemic, we have seen an increase in not only our overall referral rate of 450% of calls coming in, but for Titusville, we've seen an increase in 200, of 250% of, we usually have a very small number of calls coming from Titusville, and they've increased that much. So, what do we do? We have three programs that are shelter. We have three programs that are shelter, emergency shelter, housing stabilization, and homeless prevention. And out of those three programs, the most impactful one is our prevention program by far. We know that it costs roughly $250 to prevent a child from falling into homelessness, rather than rehousing a family at roughly $5,000 per family. So we can work really closely with all of our community partners to come together to solve homelessness. But the real magic in what we do is in our case management, and that's what we're asking to have funded tonight. Our case management focuses on assessment, ongoing community collaboration, resource brokerage, but at the heart of it, we're focusing on budgeting, we're focusing on tenancy education, landlord mitigation, really building those key supports necessary for long-term housing stability. We have short-term and long-term planning as part of our case management. So with, with our programs, without the case management, we're merely sheltering, or we're merely offering a financial assistance. We're not looking at that long game. And that's why that case management component is so key, to help families navigate into housing if they've lost it, or stay housed if they're at risk of losing it. And so that's the ask tonight, is that the City of Titusville partner with us for the first time to fund case management for roughly 13 families in the Titusville area. That's our first ask and see where we go from there. We are highly leveraged with funds through our COC, from private donations through a fund we call Help Us Move In, that helps to pay prevention funds, eviction prevention, and move-in assistance, along with a lot of foundation support. So our support from you, or our ask from you, is really just around funding those supportive services that prevent and end family homelessness for families in the Titusville area.
So you guys, and we're at the meetings together, so I, first of all, I'm very impressed with your words here. I was impressed with your words and your partners at the meetings. You are definitely a doer, and I appreciate that. And we spoke about Titusville specifically at our meeting, and the numbers have gone up, et cetera. I'm obviously asking questions about homelessness and, you know, what's the plan? We, you may not believe this, but I use a lot of football terminology. And in the meeting, I said, we gotta, we gotta call play, any play. You know, what's the play? Because it seems like we have a lot of meetings and we don't call a lot of plays. Pastor Robinson, you're probably very familiar with that. I've been to a few of your meetings, and you've pretty much said that. That's not to say we're not trying. I was in a, and I said this in the meeting as well, I was in a room with probably 30-plus people, and every single one of them were there only because they cared. We just don't sometimes know what play to call. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't get behind this effort in the homeless area and, and at least have that play called moving forward with this group. So I'm excited that you're here, and I'm excited that I've been to enough of those meetings to know what you get done. And what we can't just get done sitting up here, because we're not out there like she is all the time, it's nice to have that tool or that play to call. And I appreciate you being here, and I'm looking forward to, you know, putting some skin in the game, so to speak, and see what you can do here in Titusville.
Yeah. I wanted to speak to Vice Mayor's question earlier about workforce or workforce development. We see that as key, and I know, I know Joe knows this more than anyone. We, we need to tackle the instability, that economic instability that families face from kind of both ends. We need to not only target affordable housing and then work in case management to build the skills necessary to maintain housing, but we must focus on workforce development to help increase that post-secondary education and certification for families so that they're able to weather what's coming ahead. When the pandemic hit, 40% of the families who are low-wage faced unemployment. Only 9% of middle-wage workers faced unemployment. The highest employee actually gained employment because of the pandemic. And so our focus is how do we coordinate, and this is what we're so good at at Family Promise, and, and so open to collaboration with other agencies. We don't own any of this, it's all of us together of, how do we bring together in one place those skills from Career Source, from this, the PT program through EDC? Right now, we're partnering with the Brevard Nursing Academy. How do we bring CNA classes to the families we serve? How do we bring ESOL classes to the families we serve? How do we increase their skills, their education, and how do we empower them then to lift out of poverty? Because we know homelessness is just a symptom of poverty. So we really need to attack that as, I don't know football, so.
You were called plays the other day, I heard you.
I was gonna do a play call of some kind, but it was like in my head, but it didn't come out. But we need to drive for it.
Basically, call plays, let's just do something.
We need to carry the ball over the line. That's what we gotta get over the line.
That's right. Do something.
There you go.
Member Robinson?
Yes, Tara, hello, how are you doing?
I'm doing great.
Been a couple of months since we've seen each other.
It's been a minute.
Case management, what I do know is a little bit, I know that case management is a key to success to the homeless program. Without it, without the case management piece, and it won't work.
Right.
Because they need the guidance as well as the love that a case manager gives to their clients. And that's, that's ongoing, and it's hard to find a case manager that can withstand the storm, because it's not easy, as you well.
Right. It's a challenge. I, like the nonprofits here, just surrounded by a great staff. We've built up a great staff. We have clinical social workers on our team, and what's so great about their training as social workers, we can do, we can do anything. I mean, we can assess what's going on, we can provide crisis intervention when necessary, we can provide therapy or link to resources. But we're able to just walk alongside a family and stay neutral, but engaged and in a coaching capacity. So we've just hired another social worker today, just, just this morning, and it's important that we continue to grow. There isn't enough case management in our community that's, that's having the, the need, the impact that we need to end homelessness. So we're continuing to try to grow that to make an impact.
I, I guess, sitting on this side of the dais, it is a little bit different, because probably all of you know that if I had, being involved with all of your organization, if I had the money, I just.
Different side, that's for sure.
Because I know what it's like where you're sitting, but, you know, I appreciate that the work is continuing and go, I'm still involved with it.
Yeah.
And I'm glad to see that the applications were put in, and, and I know that the City of Titusville cares about what you do.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
I'm the one with all the questions here.
Oh, good.
I'm sorry.
No, that's great.
So how many calls do you get out of Titusville?
I, I think it's about 5% of our total. I know that when we were talking with Terry on the phone, I think that's an area that we can really address, because what we find, or what we know, is that Titusville does a good job of taking care of yourselves. It's kind of, you know, I don't pretend to know what Titusville needs. I know what we can do to end, prevent and end family homelessness, and I can bring that to Titusville. But I know that Titusville really relies, it's a very inward municipality, and I don't mean that in a negative way, I just mean that you're looking out for each other. So a lot of families don't call because they take each other in and they help each other, or there's teachers or principals, there's folks that are just wrapping families in support, and they're not necessarily getting to us because our calls come through two-on-one. And so what we found is a lot of calls come to the city. So if we can work on streamlining referrals out of the area, we serve all of Brevard County, we're centrally located in Rockledge, we're trying to relocate actually right now into the City of Cocoa to have a bigger impact. But really, truly, we could work on that. That's something that could improve the call volume, because we know that the need is there, but the numbers have never shown it. Because for years, Trey Gordon has said, we need you to, we need you up in Titusville, come up in Titusville, we need you here. But the numbers weren't showing it in terms of the calls we were receiving, or that two-on-one was receiving. And I think it's because there's a lot of taking care of your own families here. And while that's wonderful, it doesn't necessarily lend itself to bringing in other resources if they're needed in that way. So I think that that's an area that we could address as we start to work a little more strongly. We did put a person, pre-pandemic in 2019, we had an office in the Harry T. Moore Center, and put a, what we called a prevention coordinator in that office for one day a week to see what would happen. So we kept hearing that the need was there, so we said, well, let's put somebody there. But he still didn't get utilized in the way that we hoped that he would have been. So I think that that's an area that we can really improve upon. I keep hearing the need is there, and we're willing to try, and we had that, build it and they will come. You know, we believe that if we come up and do more here, we'll start to be more trusted, more referenced, more talked about amongst families, maybe have a stronger working relationship with the housing authority up here. Two-thirds of our call really come from the central part, so we have really strong working relationships in, in those areas, but not as much in Titusville. Our shelter program is, just very briefly, we shelter families in congregations and places of worship. And so families will spend a week at a time in a, in a, either a church or a synagogue that we partner with. And they rotate week to week while we work in case management to help families move into shelter. We don't have any Titusville congregations at all. And we have come up and talked to a few groups, and we're part of the North Brevard Coalition of Human Services. We would love to see more engagement with the faith-based community here to offer sheltering up in the north end of the county. We're really open to talking about whatever we can do to help what's going on in Titusville. But I think we're going to really need you to help guide what you believe needs to happen as well. So I think it's a two-way street here.
Yeah, I think that's where that meeting or that discussion takes place, in the Harry T. Moore, and we bring our people in, et cetera. But I would also say, as I believe I said at the last meeting that we attended, one of the problems I see with our churches being involved now is the COVID. We've still got some churches that aren't open.
Right.
And I can tell you that my church, IRC Methodist, down there on Highway 50, very active church, but not, not been the same since COVID started in March. We used to have 200 or 300 at a Sunday service, and we get about 70 right now.
Right.
And, you know, we used to do a whole lot better job, and I'm not being critical to anybody who's watching out there, but having the cold nights, it was a big deal for us.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, we still have a food pantry, and quite honestly, even my pastor, we have a new pastor, interim pastor, and we had a meeting the other day, and he noted that we have a food pantry, but while he's been there, we've had nobody come to the food pantry. Again, we go back to the coordination, I said that the other day, the coordination and communication. If everybody's food pantry is all open on Wednesday morning, and then there's not another food pantry up until the next Wednesday morning, we gotta work, as I said, a calendar.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what you do.
Yeah. We get, so we, when, when the pandemic hit, we made the tough decision, we had to shut our shelter program down in the way that we run it, but we've reinstituted it using hotels. And so we have hotels paired with our case management, but we still have the volunteers do safe drop-offs of food, so families are still receiving three nutritious meals a day. And then we're still working in case management intensively to work, help families move back into housing. And really, in a wonderful way, got a call from an area hotel owner here that we haven't followed up on yet, because we were on our way up here, but said, hey, we'd love to work with you and see if there's a way that we could help families. So that was an exciting call to get from Titusville this afternoon.
Well, thank you very much. Member Stokel.
Yep, thank you. I'm add a couple of questions. One, in regards to the churches, have you talked to Trey Gordon about that since he has connected to the churches?
Yeah, Trey's had me come up. I've talked to the group of the churches, one group. So we've been operational since 2013, and Trey's been trying to get us up here, like physically have churches up here in the community since 2013. So it just hasn't come to fruition. We, we serve, our network of congregations are as south as Palm Bay. Our most northern congregation is Church of Our Savior, Cocoa Beach. I say congregation because we have temples that are part of our network. And again, they shelter families from Sunday PM to Sunday AM, and I call it like a pop-up shelter. We, we take a trailer with beds to a congregation. We set it up for the week for four families at a time. And then the volunteers at the site provide the overnight staffing, they provide the three nutritious meals, we provide the transportation to and from. But our, our central resource center where families come during the day is, right now in Rockledge, we're moving it to Cocoa. So, you know, that distance is the same, Titusville to Palm Bay, in terms of that location. There's no reason we couldn't have Titusville congregations in our existing network of congregations, but we probably won't reopen that rotation until the coast is clear, whenever that is.
Yeah. And then my second question, in regards to the workforce training, are you guys partnering with Eastern Florida State College at all?
Yes.
In regards to the homeless tuition waivers, the financial aid application?
Yeah, and in fact, somebody from the Eastern Florida State College is on the board of BHC, I believe, and I'm forgetting her name, but we have talked to them a lot. And actually, we get some, in addition to those waivers, we've had donors set up a donor advice fund at Community Foundation for Brevard to help pay any cost for any of these classes. So if somebody needs tools, or if they need steel-toed boots or hard hat, or they need something for their nursing class, they need a laptop, they need books, we have donors that have set up a fund that we could access for any of the families that we're working with, for those things that may not be covered through a tuition waiver, through a scholarship. So we want to make it happen.
Okay, good. No, I appreciate it. Very good presentation, and appreciate all the partnerships. I think there are a lot of resources. I'm disappointed that we don't have a church up here, because that's kind of surprising, so I'd like to maybe see that.
Yeah, it's Barbara Kennedy, that's her name, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, she's one of our associate presidents. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor.
Just one short question.
Yeah.
How long do you guys usually stay involved with the family?
So as long as they'll have us, but our goal always is to help transition that family into self-sufficiency. So in our shelter program, we're working with them, our average length of stay in shelter is 35 days. So if family's coming in, they're rehousing within 35 days, but then we hand them off to a stabilization program. That's a full year of case management.
Okay.
The full year of case management, again, focuses on landlord relationships, tenancy education, financial coaching, resource brokerage, and really working there. And then in our prevention program, that's if a family calls and they have not lost housing yet, but are about to, we work with them for no, round about six months. So really no more than six months unless they need it. But what we find is families continue to reach out to us in the future, not because they need help, but because they want to continue to kind of pay it forward. So we'll stay connected, you know, we'll, we'll, we continue to work as long as a family is, is seeking our support.
Okay, thank you. Sounds great.
Anybody else? I see none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You two are more than essential, year-round. We may only have three, but I'm very impressed with our three. To be able to have the meals on wheels and hit that part of our population, and then to have the safe house, which is, is a very tough, tough situation that we've got to have, and they've got to have. And then to have one step in now with some homeless interaction, I think that that's pretty well-rounded, and I'm very excited about that. Certainly it'd be nice if we didn't need any of you all, right? But we do. We need you, and they need you. So I appreciate that. City Manager.
Yes, sir. If that completes Agenda Item Number One, second Agenda Item is Public Comment.
There's not a lot of you all out there, but we'll go with it. Mr. Zell, you got anything you want to say? No, you just come to say hi? All right, with that, anybody have any public comment at this time? I see none? With that, give me the nod, we're good. Council members, anything you want to add at the end? Don't be hitting that, it sounds like we're out of here.
Well, hold on.
Uh-oh. I did it now.
Good to see you guys. Keep it up.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you.
We're dismissed, thank you. That's a school.